We are good to go.
Okay, I've got seven o'clock, so I'd like to get started. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors meeting of 20th October 2021. I'm David Collingwood, Chairman of Board of Supervisors. I'm joined by all supervisors, Jim Miller, Vice Chair, and Member Mr. Jay Kaiser. I'll call tonight's meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a quick note, this meeting is being held virtually and will be recorded at its conclusion. Mr. Lippincott will post the meeting on the township's YouTube channel. A link to the meeting can be found on the township's website, I'd like to remind everyone that we will be following the West Rock Hill Township policies for public meetings and rules that apply as listed on page two of the meeting agenda. Please silence cell phones and mute your computers until you wish to speak. Are there any public comments on the agenda items as they are listed? If so, please state your name and address. Carrying none, Mr. Lippincott?
I have no emails.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to announcements. The Board of Supervisors will have an executive session following tonight's meeting to discuss personnel, legal, and real estate matters. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the September 15th, 2021 meeting minutes, win plan review status, escrow, release, and vouchers, emergency services report, building zoning and building permit report, public works report, conservation committee report, planning commission report, treasury report, and payment of bills. Mr. Lippincott, would you review the treasures report?
Sure, the treasures report for September 30th, 2021. The general fund, $1,193,218.95. Highway aid, $233,941.88. Open space, $1,224,689.58. The park fund, $33,341.7. The equipment fund, $34,039.72. Highway capital, $129.78. Streetlights, $36,841.41. The reserve fund, the general reserve fund, is $394,363.3. The American Rescue Plan Fund is $273,331.31. The open space Manderfield is $51,377.48. The sewage maintenance fund, $182,701.33. The stormwater fund, $8,329.51. And the escrow funds, $2383,169.32.
Thank you, Mr. Lippincott. Are there any comments or questions by the Board of Supervisors?
I have none.
I have none. I make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Thank you, Mr. Miller. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The consent agenda is approved as presented. We'll move on to confirmed appointments. There are none this evening. That will move on to the committee reports. The first will be park and recreation report. David Rice.
All right, how's everybody doing tonight? Park and Rec, best committee in the township, but I'm just a little bit biased. I love the... We have a great group, just got to say it. We always have some great events. September Fest was by far a wonderful day. We had, I can't tell you how many people in attendance, probably well over a thousand people. It was our first year for a food truck. I think it was relatively successful. We're going to continue to grow on the idea. We had the food truck, we had pony rides, we had petting zoo, pumpkins. The location of the events, I think, was great in the sense that there was a location at the lower towards the pond where all the kids' events were centrally located. It was great because they could go from one to the other, and it just gave us a sense of it seemed right. So it was a learning experience for moving forward. They had the fire trucks right there, they had the playground right there, the tot lot. We had, the Civil Air Patrol was there, they came and they helped us out. We had Ferris and Fifi. It was just a great day of events for the community. So it was, it's awesome. The day was wonderful. Moving on from that, we're getting some process documentation around all the events that we have and the things that we do in the park and rec. So we're getting now all that documented. We'll present that when we have all those documents completed. Some of the budget items that we're looking forward to in 2022, we're talking about upgrading some of the benches that always need bench replacements, you know, the boards and stuff like that need replacements. One of the things that we're talking about is possibly adding some cherry trees, the ones along the parking lot, which have been, they died probably a couple of years ago. So we're looking at that. The two pop-up tents that we had, that had broken that we use for our events, we're looking to replace those. Some of those things that we're looking for, that'll be on the budget. I'm not sure, I'll have to go back and have a conversation with you, Greg. It's just been a hectic schedule recently, but how you want it detailed, so we can give you some details and some numbers around that. And then possibly looking at the park, the pavilions, actually renovations, maybe, not renovations, but like painting for the gable ends of the pavilion so that they can look a little bit cleaner, nicer, little bit upgraded, a little, you know, a little shinier, and looking something, looking good like that. So I'm going to reach out to the Rotary and see if they can possibly help because I know they do have, they sponsor the Markley Pavilion, it is, so they have that one. So we're going to look at seeing if we can, you know, utilize that as far as some extra hands, as far as getting that done. And I think that is it, but I will ask if there's, was any conversation done as far as with the Historical Society and the cases in the building?
Yes, I had a phone conversation with Brenda. Today, we received an email saying that they could be out by May 31st, 2022.
Ouch, okay.
Yeah. Wow. I want to, I want to comment on that, if I may. Mr. Chairman, may I?
You may.
Okay. To me, that's unacceptable. We've waited several years to have a case. We're not asking for too much for the Park and Rec Committee. I understand, and I read the email, and I do understand it. However, I think it's important to this board to allow one of those cases to be available to the Park and Rec Committee, and I would, I would expect that that to happen by the end of November, not March or May of 2022. And this is only my opinion that I'm giving you, but I wanted to state that publicly. So people know, if you go back and look at the records, I believe it's close to three years since we started this process, which we shouldn't really have to have. That meeting room is township property, and Park and Rec is part of the township. You guys both know that. The other entity is not. They broke away as of their choice. So without getting into a whole bunch of detail of other things that are happening, I would like to ask my two fellow board members to consider somehow expediting the use of one of those showcases to the Park and Rec, which is part of our township.
Thank you. I would just follow up with that and say, could you go back to Brenda and talk to her? That's pretty far out, like Jay said, and I understand her reasoning, but...
And one of the things that I did not, they said, "or sooner." That was like the far deadline. In the email, it said, "or sooner," so I can go back and see if I can get them to expedite it. What are the hard limits, the things that really need taken care of, and I can probably get back with a better answer if we can find out those items that need the most preservation.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough, Jim. Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Dave, I have a question for you. The, the trees that were in the park that died. I was told that those were grafted trees, and that's why they died so soon. Could you, could you just look into that when you decide to buy trees? Whether they have just a natural type tree or if they're all grafted, I don't know anything about trees, so it's just, just what I had heard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
It'd be nice to have something that's not going to die as soon.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, thank you.
Good point, Mr. Miller. Any other comments or questions by the Board of Supervisors on the Park and Rec report?
I have none.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the report as presented by Mr. Rice. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, the report is passed as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now move on to the commission reports. Chief Dickerson.
Good evening, everybody. I have the October Chiefs Report. This report covers the activities for the month of September 2021. In the month of September, we responded to 931 calls for service. Of those calls, 395 of them were in East Rock Hill Township. The remaining 936 were in West Rock Hill Township. The department handled 30 traffic crashes. There were 14 crashes in East Rock Hill Township, 16 crashes in West Rock Hill Township. 14 of them were reportable, and the remaining 16 were non-reportable. Criminal activity, we had seven Part I crimes, 30 Part II crimes in September, totaling a, for a total of 37 crimes. Your Part I crimes are your more serious crimes, your index crimes, and your Part II crimes are your more minor crimes, such as a theft, things of that nature. So for reported crimes in East Rock Hill Township, we had one fraud, one furnishing alcohol to a minor, a disorderly conduct, a trespass, a fireworks complaint, and a dog law violation. For West Rock Hill Township, we had two complaints of simple assault, two reports of burglary, one theft over $200, an attempted theft from a vehicle, we had a motor vehicle theft, forgeries, we had two forgeries that were involving checks, two fraud reports, a harassment, a DUI, another disorderly conduct, a loitering at night call, harassment call, a trespass call, and a dog law violation. Criminal charges filed in the month of September with two charges of harassment, one charge of DUI, one charge of motor vehicle theft, one unauthorized use of a motor vehicle charge, reckless endangerment, simple assault, disorderly conduct, and one criminal mischief charge. Other police activities for the month of September, we conducted 313 traffic enforcement details, and we issued 17 traffic citations and 33 written warnings. Our officers also conducted 370 business checks. September was a sort of a new program for the police department. We started doing what are called school checks. The officers are entering the Penridge Schools, elementary schools, doing a walkthrough through the schools to get familiar with the layout of the school and also to kind of, you know, develop a relationship with, with our young members of the community. So for the month of September, we conducted 29 school checks in those elementary schools, 10 of those, and then we also did 10 foot patrols and 25 park checks during the month of September. So for the year, we have responded to 7,253 calls. We've had 195 traffic crashes, 300 yearly offenses, and we filed 89 charges so far for the year of 2021. I just want to add real quick that the Drug Takeback event is on October 23rd, this Saturday. There's two stations in, one is at the police headquarters on Ridge Road, and the other one is at Grandview Hospital. In conjunction with the Drug Takeback, we're doing a food drive at the headquarters with, they're supposed to be picking up the food, it's supposed to be non-perishable foods donated, and then we're working along with a couple other departments in the, in the county to take all that down to the President Steve food drive that they do every year for the radio station. And then last thing that I have is, you will see some of our officers who already don't have beards will have beards in the month of November. We're going to be doing it, we're going to be doing a No Shave November. Officers are going to donate money to keep their beards, if they already have a beard, and then they're going to donate $50 to grow a beard. And that's going to go towards Quaggett Town Police Department's Shop of the Cop program that's going to take place in December. And that would be my Chiefs Report for October.
Chief, I have two things. This is Jim. First thing, I want everybody to know, they can also donate to No Shave November by going to your website.
Yes.
We've had people do that in the past and still can. Now, if you would just slide your head to the right a little bit, everybody can see our brand-new police car and the new design. There you go. You can come back now. Has that gone into service or will be going into service?
Just, just like everything else we have going on right now, Jim, they're having a hard time getting parts. So we're still waiting for some of the parts to arrive. I was told the first week of November, they should start doing the upstall of all the equipment, the car, the cage, and all that thing. So, yeah, we're almost there, just another couple of weeks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other comments, Mr. Kaiser?
Just wanted to say, thank you, Chief. You're doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think the, I'm glad you said something about the car. It's going to be my next question, but Mr. Miller, speak me to it. So with that said, any other comments or questions? We'll look for a motion to approve the Chiefs Report.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. The police report is approved as presented. We'll now move on to the Joint Recreation Authority Report. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. The pool has officially closed for this, for the winter. The, everything's been drained, everything's turned off, and it's pretty much completely shut down. We just have a couple more bills to pay for insurances and things like that throughout the year. We're sitting with about $9,000 in our account right now, which is very good. We're looking at, we're finally replacing, I'm sorry, repairing the three skimmers in the pool that need to be repaired. We reached out for an estimate on that, and we also reached out, or in the process of reaching out to several folks in the area to take down the trees that are dead. We have about two trees that are out near the house in front of the building, which we have to take down because they're on our property, and we have about six or seven around the pool itself, which have to come down and may require a bucket truck. So we have to get pricing on that, but that's it. Everything else is pretty much locked up for the winter. That's all I have.
Great. Do, I have a question for you. Do, do you anticipate any large capital expenses next year other than these skimmers or anything special? I mean, you had the zip line this year. Anything planned for next year, or don't you want to divulge those?
We don't have any big expenses for next year. All the maintenance has been done. We did it all during the period of, we were down for COVID last year and then through this year. So it is in really good shape. It's just these three skimmers that are outstanding. Everything else is pretty much caught up. If we do anything, it would just be minor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, Mr. Kaiser?
I have none.
Okay, with that said, I have a motion to approve the Joint Authority Report.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye for approval.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The Joint Record Report is approved as presented. With that, we'll move on to the Tax Collector's Report. I understand the tax collector is not present tonight. Mr. Lippincott, will you be giving that?
Yes, you have the Tax Collector's Report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For this month, $1,436.35 were collected.
That's it?
Yeah, most of the real estate taxes that are collected for the township are in the beginning part of the year. So these are just end-of-years that are straggling in before December 31st.
Any questions or comments by the board?
I have none.
I have none. Saying none, I'll make a motion to approve the Tax Collector's Report as given by Mr. Lippincott.
I'll second it.
Mr. Kaiser, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The Tax Collector's Report will be approved as presented. With that, we'll move on to the Engineers Report. Mr. Balla.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only item I have under my report is the hamburger land development for project on Anna Lane. I believe Jared Hamburger is on the call. Is that correct, Jared?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Want to give a, just a short overview of what you're proposing to do with this addition to your business?
Yep, we're just out of space inside of our shop. I got a lot of stuff outside that I'd like to get inside and clean up the area and just have a little bit more room inside our shop to work.
Okay, and that's a 2,000-square-foot building addition, essentially in the part of the parking area, correct?
Correct.
Right, so there's, there's really no, not much in line of new improvements on the property. The board has our August 27th review letter in your packet. The Planning Commission had made a recommendation for approval. I will note, they are asking for waivers of curb and sidewalk, as there's no other curb and sidewalk on Anna Lane. Everything else is pretty straightforward.
Steve?
Yes.
I have an October 6th review letter from you.
That is right, but the packet has August 27th. All right. They have both. I'm sorry, there, there is an October letter that was, they revised the plan. And it has, it has cleaned up items on it, but the project essentially remained the same, 2,000-square-foot addition.
So we're asking Jared and we're asking Mr. Meese if all of the items in the October 6th letter are, will comply. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Jared and Scott.
We are asking for a waiver of the curb and sidewalk. There is none on that subdivision. They're only adding addition to their property. I mean, the use of the property is, remains the same as when Mr. Hamburger bought it. He's just getting, taking some of the outside storage stuff, and now it's going to be indoors. And we know there is a contribution for the recreation. We're fine with that. The only other item that I would like to talk about is the cost of the public improvements is $885. I know you normally put together a development and financial security agreement for public improvements, but in this case, the amount of public improvements is so small. I wondered if it, it just doesn't seem worth the time, effort, and paperwork to actually go through that whole development and security agreement for just $885.
It doesn't? And you're, you have two options. The first option is you can complete the public improvements prior to getting the building permit for the addition, in which case they're no longer required by law. The second option would be deposit that money with Greg, and given the amount of the money, if Steve agrees with you about the amount of the money, then we could probably forego agreements and you could just do a letter to him. We can work something out. The goal is not to torture people over these fees.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I would agree that they're minor. I do have Scott's estimate, and that's satisfactory. Again, it's so low because there is no stormwater management. There is no new site construction, except for some signage and parking lot changes.
Right, and if that's something, we can work that out at the staff level.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm fine with that.
So given what the engineer has said and what the solicitor has said, we're looking therefore tonight for a motion to have the solicitor draw up an approval resolution?
Which would reflect the conditions set forth in Steve's letter and the grant of the waiver request from the applicant?
Correct. Anything else?
I'm just looking at my my status letter. To get to the November meeting, we actually need a plan review extension, Scott. Could you, could you give us a 30-day extension to get to the November meeting?
Okay, because you're just, you vote on, I mean, you vote on the resolution, and then you actually come back with the resolution and vote on the, on the resolution at that time, right?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can fire that off to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'll make, I'll make that a 30-day extension.
Thank you.
So given what has just been discussed, the motion would be to have the solicitor draw up an approval resolution?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would, I'll make the motion to move forward with Mary's recommendation there.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Balla, have anything else?
That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions by the board?
I have none.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the Engineers Report as presented. Look for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Engineers Report is approved as presented. We'll go to the Solicitor Report.
Thank you. Although there's nothing under the agenda. Greg asked me to address a question that he received from a resident in the last month, they are following September Fest. And it's an issue that's come up a couple of times at the Board of Supervisors meeting, so it probably bears like five minutes of discussion, if that's all right with you. The resident asked why a citizens group, specifically Cliff Cole's group, had to submit documents to the township to have them reviewed before they handed them out at September Fest? When, if I wanted to make bracelets or cupcakes, I could have a stand, and you wouldn't taste my cupcakes or look at my bracelets. You'd just give me a permit or whatever, permission to go in and have a stand at September Fest. And the question was why that was, why that was fair. And I explained to Greg, and he asked if I would repeat that explanation tonight, that the Constitution and the cases under the Constitution treat commercial speech differently than they treat political speech. And if somebody, there isn't as much protection for commercial speech. So if, if, if you didn't like somebody, what somebody was selling, or if they had a, like, a bad track record from the year before, you could just arbitrarily or unilaterally tell them, "No, you don't get a booth this year at September Fest." And there's not a whole terrible lot they could do about it. However, if you open political speech up and allow that in that particular forum, then you can't deny anyone else's political speech at that same forum. So while you may agree with everything that one group has to say, there are a lot of groups out there with whom you might feel that their, what their message offended the values of the community. And I don't want to get into specifics of who those groups are or whose groups might be, but there are people that you wouldn't feel comfortable have coming to, to, to September Fest. People that might advocate violence, or they harming children or things like that. And you, like, that would be offensive to this community and most every community. The only answer to that is to not open a particular forum to that speech. And then the response that Greg made to that was, "But it's in a township park. Don't we have to allow everything in a township park?" To the extent that the park is considered a public square, yes, we do. But during September Fest, you have a limited event for a specific purpose. It's no longer the public square. It is no longer a place where, you know, every farm is welcome. There's a specific purpose and a specific agenda for September Fest. And that's to have a place where kids can go with their parents and families can attend just to, to celebrate the change of the season and the just to um to celebrate the change of the season and the acknowledgement of the community. It is not, it is not necessarily the public square where you have to allow all political speech. So Greg asked that I offer that explanation so that people understood that it wasn't so much the township trying to make Cliff Cole's life different, more difficult, but to try and safeguard September Fest from being considered um, an event where all political speech is welcome.
Thank you. Um, anything else, uh solicitor?
No.
Okay. Any questions, comments by the Board of Supervisors?
I have none.
I have none. I have none.
All right. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the solicitor's report.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Solicitor's report is approved as presented. Thank you. Uh, we'll now move on to the Township Manager's Report. Mr. Lippincott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the first uh item is in your packet. There's a resolution, Bucks County, twenty twenty-one Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Um, every so often Bucks County has to update um a disaster mitigation plan, which identifies places in the township throughout the county um where hazards uh could be. Uh, and it's one of the things that we have to do to receive post-disaster post-disaster hazard mitigation grant programs and funds. Um, the plan is uh four hundred and sixty-nine pages. Uh, before you is a resolution to adopt it. It says, uh, now there be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of West Rock Hill Township, um, the Bucks County Twenty Twenty-One Hazard Mitigation Plan Update is hereby adopted as the official hazard mitigation plan of the county and the respected officials' agencies and identify the implementation strategy of Bucks County Twenty Twenty-One Hazard Mitigation Plan and hereby direct to implement the recommended activities assigned to them. So I didn't know if you had any questions. Um, that would be Resolution Twenty Twenty-One oh eight.
I have no comments, questions?
I have none.
I would make a motion to adopt uh the Resolution Twenty Twenty-One oh eight.
I'll second.
We have a second. We have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion's approved. Mr. Lippincott?
Okay, the next item is authorization to go out to bid for the Twenty Twenty-Two Pipe Replacement. There is a list in the board's packet of the pipes to be replaced in Twenty Twenty-Two. First one is Washington Avenue at Ridge Road. The second one's Old Bethlehem Pike at the pump station. The third one's at Shoe Craft Road. Uh, there's another one at Forest Road in Old Beth. Another one at Green Top and Burger Road and another one to East Old State Road. These are all, most of them are with head balls.
Does? Oh, yeah, I had a question when you're finished speaking there.
Sure, that those are the list of them.
Okay, um, you mentioned Washington and Ridge. Does the current work come up through there? Come up that far? Or does it stop before it gets to there? The current work that's being done on Ridge?
Oh, um, that would be after it was done. They would have their work done. Uh, Ridge Road there, I think it goes to Steve. How far does that go? Does that go to Mountain View? Or does that go past for the sewers?
It it comes all the way to the house on the other side of Washington Avenue.
So you would go past?
Yeah, we'll it will cross that, but you are correct, Greg. This, we would be bidding it now in anticipation of work in the spring or over the winter if it was suitable, so that the sewer project should be out of the way before we would start.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the fact that it's being done later. I just wanted to make sure one one work isn't going to affect what was already done. In other words, I don't, I don't, I want to make sure that the sewer work is done and doesn't have to be changed or anything because of this other pipework going on.
I'll 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 look at that.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, any other comments, uh, Mr. Kaiser? Questions?
I just, I I'll make a clarification, I think, and Steve, you can look at it, but I believe the sewer work is being done on Ridge Road, which is the state road there, and the pipe work is being done. That that's actually our our road, Washington Avenue. Uh, would be, it would be away from that, from my, from from what I've seen on how they have the sewer line laid out, but Steve, you're the engineer, so you uh you take a look at it.
I'll confirm where they have that. What we're talking about is replacing the trench box. That's been problematic for the Public Works Crew. That's right there at the end.
Oh, okay, okay, I got it then. All right, I I got it.
That 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 that's back away from the from where the sewer line would actually be.
Yeah, I thought I thought there was more than that, so thank you.
Assuming that the uh solid rock doesn't uh prevent them from getting that far.
Right.
So uh, I will make a motion to authorize uh that advertisement of the uh two thousand twenty-two pipework. Um, we'll need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ryan, you have the authorization. Uh, Mr. Lippincott, may proceed.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is that we have the Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two Snow Plowing Bid Results at last month's meeting. You authorized the advertisement. We had one bidder affluent retrieval at a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour. I would ask the board to approve that one bid.
I'd make a motion if we need it.
I'll second.
Yeah, we absolutely need it. I'm just surprised that there's only one bid, but um I've got to take anything we can get at this point. Um, so we have a motion and we have a second to um
To accept the bid.
To accept the bid, yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. You have what you need, Mr. Lippincott?
Thank you.
Wow, all right. Next.
The last item, well, the second to last item is authorization to bid a forty by forty-six salt storage building. In the board's packet, you have uh a quote, a design of a steel roof building. Um, it is forty by forty-six and it will store seven hundred and sixty-one tons of salt. The importance of this is is that it will hold the average amount of salt we use a year in an average snowstorm. Um, currently, we can store just about five hundred tons. And sometimes we run out and with salt supplies sometimes are lacking, I would like to have a salt storage shed that would have one year's worth of salt in it at all times. Secondly, the salt shed is kind of long in the tooth that we currently have.
You're being kind.
Yeah, well, we had discussed that several years to uh to improve it, fix it up, but I I have looked at it myself and I I think the time, the time is uh now to uh to move forward.
Yeah, I agree. We got it. We gotta do it.
One thing I know for sure, we were in a, we were in a terrible crisis a few years ago. Remember when we had that late storms and and we ran out of salt? There was no salt around and they weren't shipping any from the other countries, from India or wherever it came from?
Yep.
And uh, we had to buy it from, we bought, I think we bought some from the feed mill. We bought some from H and K. We 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 had a, we had to go everywhere we could to try and beg, borrow and steal to get uh enough salt to to maintain our roads, and I think uh, this, the residents of the township really expect us to be prepared.
I agree, and I and I was reading the specs um as they were presented and I and and I I had thought about do we want to look at an alternative to steel? But then I see that the uh the steel roof is forty years um minimum uh as 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 far as the guarantee the of a of a life cycle. I think that's pretty good. I mean, you put a steel roof on a barn, it lasts forever. So I don't, at this point, I don't know that we have to consider uh alternative um material other than steel. I I don't know how the other supervisors feel about that. Like, I guess it doesn't hurt that to put that out for a bid, but I don't know if it's really something that's worth the effort.
I don't know what we're gonna get that's better than steel.
Well, I, yeah, I'll I'll share some in in uh, well, experience, I guess, with this kind of stuff. Um, if I may, the steel, the the steel, the way that's, the way that's curved like that, the the snow don't stay on that long. It melts off and then it and then it flies off. So you get a much more life out. You don't have the risk. If you were to put canvas up there, you'd have the weight of the snow. You have potential for caving if you get a foot or two foot of snow up there. And then ice, think about the ice, what ice does to canvas and stuff. I don't think that we have an option really if we're gonna do it. I mean, if we can't afford to do it or they don't want to do it, then we say no, but I think I would support this this building the way it's presented with a steel roof.
Yeah, I I agree with Jay. We we got to move forward with this. I don't want to end up like we did in previous years.
And and I think we we need to move forward now because it's already October and we have a shed that's in somewhat questionable condition, so uh I would I would make the motion then that we authorize the that we make this bid.
I second it.
And we have a second. Um, any discussion questions further by the board?
I have none.
If not, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Lippincott, you have your authorization. And you said you had one more item?
Thank you, yes. Uh, in the board's packet is the first draft of the uh budget. Um, please take a look over it. If you have any questions, uh, email me. I'll meet with any board member individually. We can talk about it. And then it'll be brought up um at the next meeting, at the November meeting, asking authorization um to advertise, and then it'll be on public display from November till your December meeting.
Thank you. Any comments, questions by the board?
No.
I would make a motion to move forward if you if we may.
I'll second.
Thank you. So uh, let's, that's motion to um approve the Township Manager's Report?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
We have that, and we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Mr. Lippincott. We will now move to old business. Does anyone have any old business I'd like to discuss?
Um, I have a couple of things here. I just wanted to give some updates. Yeah, I'll read this. Uh, a year ago, we installed the EV charging station in the park. I'm happy to report that recently uh we received notification that the uh grant check, the rebate check for nine thousand dollars uh should be arriving any day now. So that that nine thousand dollars covers the initial price to actually purchase the EV station, and that's a grant that came in from the litigation against uh the US versus VW or something like that. Uh, secondly, the Perkyam and Watershed Authority is is a local organization that is a leading authority on stormwater management. The township subscribes to the Conservancy's newsletters, which supply us with valuable information. Uh, you may have noticed that we put information from the Conservancy in our in our own newsletters. This week, the Conservancy announced that West Rock Hill Township has been awarded their Environmental Land Use Award for calendar year twenty twenty-two. The award was for the installation of our solar array and the planned installation of the ground cover under it and around it and the array uh for stormwater and the um planning for stormwater management. Because this is the first installation of its kind in Pennsylvania. We've been working with the Conservancy for almost a year on the planning, and we're very happy to have been presented this award. This past Friday, representatives from the Perkyam and Watershed Conservancy were here at the township to present the award and and create a short video for their website. Uh, Greg and I were honored to accept it on behalf of the township. More information can be gotten from the web, from their website, and links to the information will be put on our website when it becomes available. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, any other old business?
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you. Seeing that, um, we'll now move on to agenda item number twelve, new business. Anyone have any new business they'd like to discuss?
I have none.
I'd like to discuss one thing. Um, I know that we have, we have an ordinance in there that we that it won't go anywhere probably, but I'd like to discuss the um revisiting of uh changing our ordinance so that we can replace the two bridges on Allentown Road that are that are uh safety hazards, I call them, and that's the Hump Bridge that's up Butter Creek and the other one is at the Twin Churches there. Uh, I think it is, it is twenty twenty-one. I think now is the time that we consider or look at making two-lane safe passable bridges in our township. Now, I'm 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 putting this out there because I think it needs to be revisited with with the issues that we've had in the in the recent past with storms and such. Uh, the the bridge up in Milford didn't, nothing happened to that. The one that goes through the Unami goes underneath that at Campbell's Dam there. Uh, and the one down in Southport survived the storm as well, but uh uh, we can't do anything without changing the the uh the resolution or ordinance that's put in place. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't expect that anything's going to be done. Thank you.
Jay, Jay, I want to follow up on that. Um, those, I mean, our ordinance, even if we change it, and I'm not saying we will or won't, I'm just, I think we should take it up as a discussion point. I agree with you. The the bridges themselves are state-owned. Do we think we're going to get any activity if we change it? Do we think we're going to get act any activity from the state in the near future?
Um, well, of course, the senators have changed since I had this discussion, but when I had the discussion with Senator McElhaney, he told me he would, he would be able to get us a bridge in a year if we would change, if we wouldn't have that ordinance in there. Now, of course, there's a different senator in now, but you can't even start the process. Uh, and I spent a lot, I think you know, Jim, I spent a lot of time on on the safety and and the complaints and stuff. I've heard from residents and people that drive through our township with those two bridges, and I know that there is a view of of wanting a calming historic atmosphere. However, from my perspective, as a as a leader of this township, my job is to try and provide safety and welfare of the people, and and I think in today's society, we need two-lane safe passable bridges and not bridges that create a uh uh jam-up like we've seen over the past several years. And then a lot of work was done. I mean, Jeff Markley spent a lot of time with the with the church, he he belonged to the church here. We had, we had several other people that sat in on meetings, even Paul Clymer sat in on some meetings when when we were trying to get this worked out. And then, you know, of course, I wasn't aware of the ordinance that was in place at the time until after many, many hours of of uh of work. So I just want to put it out there. I think if we had discussion, we'd have to have the right discussion with the right people and then and then move forward from there.
Jay, I'd be happy to sit down and have conversations about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to, I also, I'd like to make a comment. I I think it it's well worth having the discussion. The one thing I would caution is that we should be very careful what we wish for. Uh, because I know that if those bridges are all two-lane, I mean, for for trucks can come in both directions without clipping mirrors and what have you, without the conning effect. I think a lot of residents that live on that road would might be tremendously upset with the increase in truck traffic because you know, right now, there's an issue where all the trucks trying to use that road is a is a way around the turnpike in in three oh nine. So I mean, there's some downsides to this as well as upsides.
Well, I think it's more than just the bridge too. I think it's the whole roadway up there that's very narrow with big drops off the side. I think that all has to be taken into the discussion.
Right, and I think we should have that discussion. We should continue the discussion, and I and I welcome that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other new business?
I have none.
I have none, Mr. Kaiser?
None.
Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to public comment. If anyone has public comment, please state your name and address, and if you comment, you have two and a half minutes. Um, do I hear anyone?
Yeah, my name is uh Charles Diesel, ten twenty-five Indian Rock Road. Uh, excuse me, I've been a resident for thirty-four years of uh West Rock Hill. And I've talked with Greg and uh recently we have no trash collection. We have a seven or a four-house community, seven residents. Uh, after thirty-four years of paying waste management, they abruptly ended our trash service or trash collection in the middle of August. We tried to go to Whitetail. They did it for a week, then they stopped. Uh, we tried several haulers, everything else to try to get someone to come out here and haul our trash without success. I mean, waste management and Whitetail has basically sucked up a lot of the small carriers. So they pretty much have a quasi-monopoly in the area. The bottom line, we have seven residents here without trash collection. Uh, and nowhere to turn. I filed a complaint with the Department of Environmental Protection because apparently there's an ordinance and there's also a two oh two within West Rock Hill. I guess it's laws or whatever you want to call it. I guess it's laws or whatever you want to call it bylaws, that everyone's required to have trash pickup. Well, you have seven residents that do not have it, and we've been trying for months now to secure it without success, and we've kind of run out of options, and that's why we're coming to the township right now to help us, I'm on the agenda for next month. Unable to make the deadline this month, I sent a letter to Greg, he has a copy of it, as well as the complaint I filed with the Department of Environmental Protection, and I was hoping in the interim between now and next month that we can come with a solution for our community. It's a private road, it's off Finland Road, Indian Rock Road, Indian Rock Community, and again, it's four houses, seven residents, five of the seven residents are senior citizens. And so we need, we need help, and we're looking for the township, other than paying taxes, we've never asked for anything from the township. We maintain the road, we snowplow the road, we do everything with it, now we need your help, and hopefully, you know, can come to a solution for us in the next month.
And to the board members, the staff's just, just been made aware of this in, in the past week, and we've already had several discussions. And we've gone through the ordinance that Mr. Dietzold refers to, and, and we're trying to think up creative solutions, including, you know, trying to like put some pressure on the, the haulers. Trying to figure something out, because as he said, we have an ordinance in place that requires that every resident dispose of trash at like, you know, a verified landfill. And, and they're not able to do that because their trash hauler won't pick up their trash, it's, it's a, it's a very difficult situation for them. And we are planning on doing a lot of work on it between now and the time he's a confirmed appointment in November. Hopefully, we'll have it resolved before then.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I speak a minute? Okay, I, I, I wanted to, I'll, I'll share with you, I have the same kind of, it's not the same thing, I do get my trash picked up. I live on Ridge Road. But I will tell you, since Whitetail bought my hauler, the hauler that used to haul for, for us, my trash sometimes, right now, actually, as we speak, my trash was not picked up at dark. And sometimes it goes to the next day, my, my recycling sometimes doesn't get picked up till Friday. And it's supposed to be picked up on Wednesday mornings. I, I understand, and I know that there are other people in the township that are having issues with Whitetail, I don't know about waste manage, management, but I know Whitetail bought, bought our hauler out that we used to have, Trademark was the company that we had before. They were tremendous. I've been on the phone with Whitetail numerous times, and they, they say they'll get somebody out, and they usually do. But I'm sharing experience, as a citizen, I have had similar issues in getting my trash and my recycling taken away in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay, Jay, I'll echo that too, I mean, I, I see, I put my trash out on Tuesday night, Wednesday, and sometimes Thursday morning, I'm still waiting for them to come, so I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, please state your name and address.
Regina Schreymeyer, Sterners Road, Green Lane. I just wanted to say about Whitetail. I did read that they had to, they replaced their recycling trucks. And for a while, ours isn't, did, wasn't taken till much later this afternoon. And we have a Wednesday pickup, but part of me wondered if some of it had to do with how they had to convert their trucks, their recycling trucks to pick up the new trash cans that we got, some of, some people around the township already have the ones with the yellow lid, but we did not. And it coincided with the late pickup, so I, I have no idea if that really had anything to do with it. But that was an assumption I made when I read why things were late. That's it.
Thank you. Any other public comments, please name, state your name and address. Mr. Lippincott, do you have any on email?
There is no public comment on email.
Hearing no others, I will look for a motion for adjournment of the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser, I will second it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone for coming out this evening, see you in November.